Good afternoon, everyone. City of Lamarck City Council Special Agenda of June 11, 2024. Notice is hereby given that the City Council and the TERS Board of the City of Lamarck, Texas, will conduct a special joint meeting on June 11, 2024, beginning at 4:00 PM in Council Chambers, at 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with Section 551.127B of the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer and the Quorum of the City, Lamarck City Council and the TERS Board, intend to be and will physically be present at 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public. The Council and the Board will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order from a, from the City Council perspective. Certainly, we have our TERS Board with us. Doug, you are the Chairperson of the TERS Board. Would you call your meeting to order at this time? Do you recognize the form? Very good. We will move now to, thank you, Doug. We'll move now to Council Roll Call. Kira, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A?
Present.
Councilmember District B?
Present.
Councilmember District C?
Present.
Councilmember District D?
Present.
And Mayor.
Thank you. I'm present. We will move now to our invocation and pledge. I will do the invocation. Councilmember Ross, would you do the pledge? If you are able, please do. Let's pray. Most holy God, we certainly acknowledge your presence in this place, and we thank you, Lord, for leading us in this great city. We pray, God, that you would lead us to do what's in the best interest of all of those members that call this great city home. We thank you, Lord, for the presence of our TERS Board, members of our Omega Bay Homeowners Association. God, we just give you all of the thanks and the glory for what's about to take place in this moment. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
......
Thank you, Councilmember Ross.
Mayor, before you move on?
Yes.
We have all the TERS Board members state their name for the record, please.
Very good. If you are a member of the TERS and you are close to a microphone, in fact, you probably would need to speak into the microphone. We would need your name. And what else did you need, Kira?
Just their name.
Just your name.
Cheryl Gray.
Al Horzika.
Doug Bodward.
Patty Shipley.
Darlene Barnes.
Leslie Cruz.
Very good. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We're now at item four, citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, give the mayor, the Presiding Officer, your full legal name, your address, and the item you wish to deliberate to speak about. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you're visiting with us via phone, you may press... ... via Zoom on the smartphone, tablet, or computer. You may press the microphone button in the lower portion of your screen. And if you are here with us in person, you may approach the seating area. We will have a microphone for you, and you will be heard at this time. Kyle, are there any persons online wishing to speak? Let us be reminded, those of us that are here in person, that council is one. And if you address council, you address council as a council and as a whole. Are there any persons here today in our meeting wishing to speak in citizens' participation? Very good. We'll move past item four to item five, new business. Items presented to council for discussion and possible action. Five-one, discussion regarding the dedication of the private Omega Bay streets to the City of Lamarck. Mr. Garcia, I believe that you wish to lead this discussion.
Yes, Mayor, absolutely. Thank you very much. There's been meetings separately on some of these topics dating back to probably... Thank you. Sorry, my bad there.
Apologize. There's been meetings leading to this discussion that we're about to have today, leading back to probably more than two years, I believe. HOA members, presidents, two presidents ago. I believe, if, if I remember correctly, Mr. Danny on that. And also the TERS being in conjunction, we've, we've done our due diligence and homework preparing for this as far as what the needs were from the TERS perspective. Both Kira and Gus have led these TERS Board meetings up to date. So I will ask them to continue to do so, particularly Gus, who has been the legal mind frame from this case as to where we are to date. And then we could obviously go around and then have some of the requests that have been made by the, by the leaders of the associations that are tied to this program.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Gus, did you want to add to the opening?
No. Uh, no, Mayor.
Kira, did you want to? Very good. We have a, with us, before us, council, we have proposals for the presentation to council. Does this come from the TERS Board or does this come from the HOA? I see Mr. Mitchich's name at the bottom of it. Comes from HOA. Do you all have this in front of you? Very good. So I believe, then, the best course of action is for us to move through this list, item by item, so that we can get clarity. Council, do we object to moving through this list, one through four, and discuss as we go? Any objections to that?
Mayor, my question is this, and it's just me now.
Yes, sir.
I, as we review this topic, I can blindly take whatever information is handed to me. I can blindly listen to the R.C. attorney, but that's not me, as you know. And I need Gus or whomever. I, I, I need the original enabling documents, organizational documents of the TERS. I need the original agreements between the HOA and the City of Lamarck. Any history attached to that as well, too, Gus? That's, I've been trying to locate and identify those documents. That's not going to stop us from what we're doing here. That's just my request.
Sure. That's a valid request, Mayor Protem, and certainly, I believe, I suspect this is why this is merely a discussion, because we are, we're trying to get clarity. But however, Kiera, Gus, is there any way for us to produce those documents? Are those documents in existence?
I do have the original enacting documents for the TERS Board, and I do have, I do have documents relating to, I believe, the formation of the Omega Bay subdivision that I can get to you all, but they are, it's a pretty long document, so I might take a little bit of time to get copies made for everyone.
Okay. Will you be able to do that during the course of this meeting?
Yes.
So you are, you are going to produce for us the enabling documents that created the TERS Board, as well as the documents that formed the HOA Board in Omega Bay? Is that what you're saying?
I don't, wouldn't have their HOA documents, but I would have some historical documents that were left by my predecessors regarding the Omega Bay subdivision. But I'm not sure that I would have their actual HOA documents, but just creation of the area.
Okay. Mayor Protem, is that what you...
No, that's fine, as long as we produce it. One, one last question, just as, as we undertake this discussion. Is there unanimity as to the position of the HOA, per its president, per this letter, and the TERS Board?
I believe there is.
Okay.
Very good. Mayor Protem?
That's all. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
If I may. We, we have also asked for members of our engineering team to be here, as well as our public safety in the form of our fire, in case the, the question or subject matter or expert need comes for the relationship having to do with the streets. The main concern that we have now, and I'll, I'll paraphrase for the, for the former everybody, is to discuss the potential of possibly handing and naming over the streets over for city ownership, and what the pros and cons would be on that perspective, and what the challenges would be in that, in, in doing so, and what the steps would need to happen in order for that to even take place. An assertion that we have been formidable towards as this council, the direction that we've been given is to continue to work towards that. There is a need for repair of the streets by Omega Bay and for public knowledge, for those that understand, since the city does not own those streets, and they are not considered public streets to date, we are not able to make some of those needed repairs. In addition to that, there's been other conversations that are not discussed here within, but also there's been a need for dredging of some of those canals and some of those things that's been done to date. The only thing that we've been able to do is, one, take over the light bill for, for, for those actual streetlights. And the second thing that's been addressed is we've just recently, if I'm wrong, I think all the lights have been done, been switched to LED lights now, yes?
Oh.
Not all of them, okay. There's one left. If you could tell me which one, so I could follow up on that when you have a moment. But we have included them in our light discipline survey of switching them over to LED, so we've been able to get some success in doing that as well. The next step for us to do is understand what it would take if we were to do that, and then obviously, all three parties being in, you know, in, in congruence, that that's the step that we wanted to take.
Very good. I think it's clear, as we get into this. Previous councils to this council has expressed a great willingness to incorporate Omega Bay and our street infrastructure. And I'll say "our" because, again, regardless of whether or not they're private today, certainly our residents drive them. This council, previous to this, has expressed an eagerness to adopt those streets. And we have acted in a way that is in accordance with that eagerness, with streetlights and other things that we've discussed. There have been several discussions. And to my knowledge, one thing is clear. We're here for you. You are a part of our family, as we are a part of yours. So from that foundational understanding, let us proceed into this discussion. And so there was a, there was proposals turned in, I assume by the HOA, for presentation to council. And the first item is a reversion contract for Omega Bay roads reconstruction and canal dredging. And so before we even begin discussing this, Gus, would you give us an understanding of what a reversion contract would be? In theory, in theory.
In theory, it would be a contract that... In theory, it would be a contract that if the city did not perform certain things, land that was transferred to the city would revert back, that land would be then transferred back to a third party. Or a third party, someone else, whether that's the original party who transferred the land to the city or someone else.
So there was an agreement made?
No, there were, oh.
If there were an agreement made?
Okay.
And the City of Lamarck did not live up to our agreement. The contract would then revert those, those streets back to the Omega Bay subdivision.
That's correct. Now, whether that contract is, would be in accordance with Texas law? I mean, I, I got this document yesterday, so I would need to look at that some more, so.
Okay. And not only the streets, but, but this, but number one talks about canal dredging as well.
Correct.
And so we're speaking about the canals as well.
I, I would assume so.
And so whose idea, was this your idea, Mr. Mitchich? For the reversion contract?
The reversion contract had come up in some other conversations.
Okay. Are you, are you representing number one? Can you help us to understand what your thoughts are behind it? Yes, sir. You have the floor. Mr. Mitchich, we need you to speak into the microphone.
The reversion contract, Mayor and Council, is to more or less protect the citizens of Omega Bay. You know, donating the roads to the city and not having, not ever getting things done, that's not something that's acceptable. What we're looking at is, is establishing in this contract, you know, a mutually agreeable timeline, and the, the bullet points that need to be met during that timeline, you know, in, in order to accomplish getting the roads rebuilt and the canals dredged. And obviously, we're, we're looking at a, a methodology that keeps Omega Bay into the city. You know, because without it, our direction is, you know, maybe something contrary to what the city wants to see. But I can go through this bullet by bullet on this thing with you.
Is there, is there something, do you have something more than this what we have here?
No, these are just the talking points.
Okay, okay, okay. So you mean two, three, and four, you can go, okay, okay.
If you'd like me to proceed. And at the end, I'll recap, because there are going to be some things I, I, I recognize that, that you're going to immediately say, whoa, we, we can't do that, you know? But I'll explain it at the end why, you know, and, and where we're at. And, and I'll, you'll, you'll see.
Let, let's, before we get there, let's, 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 let's stay at one, because I want to ask Doug, as a representative of the TERS, this, this idea, and then we'll let you proceed, Robert. This, this idea of a, of a version contract, what does the TERS Board, what is their opinion of this idea?
So I guess the original...
And, and we need you to get into a microphone, Doug. I'm, I'm sorry.
So I guess the original understanding of the development of the TERS was to utilize tax money to help rebuild our streets. And during that thing where we developed the board, board's kind of new to the TERS. And part of the understanding is, we have to, in order to do that, after the roads are complete, it should be given back to the city to be able to use all of our tax dollars. As far as us on the reversion part of the contract, we believe, I mean, if, if certain things are not done in a certain order or if we are stalled for an indefinite period, then it wouldn't be fair for us to ask our citizens to give over the streets and then have nothing done in return.
Sure, sure, sure. And is that a fair representation of what the board feels?
I believe that's a fair representation of the board.
Very good. At this point, before Mr. Mitchich proceeds to number two, council, do we have any clarifying questions for Mr. Mitchich or Doug as relates to item one?
I do have.
Go ahead, Joe.
Robert, the, this, this document here, has it been prepared with advice by outside counsel? No. This is just simply your first effort?
This is strictly to get us to a point, and we all basically agree on some things, because we can't, there's more sense in going as council, than council. It just...
Okay.
Doesn't matter, you know, at that.
Council, do we have any other clarifying questions for item one?
No, so basically...
Good, I'm sorry.
Just for clarity's sake, so basically you're saying, if we don't do what we're supposed to do, then it'll revert back to the HOA, the, the original setting. I just want to make sure that everyone understands. Correct? Okay.
Last clarifying question. This reversion contract, in, in your understanding of it, will be tied to a timeline and completed tasks?
Correct.
Okay. All right. You may proceed, Mr. Mitchich.
And just what you spoke to just then, it, it's like any contract between any business or anything. You, you've got performance metrics and timelines. And so, let's say on bullet number two, it's, it's, we would look for the city to provide the detailed construction plan with a mutually agreeable timeline with day increments per item. You know, you already have a survey, you know, which can be recertified, which, you know, but that's the starting point. You know, we're not going to dictate to you a construction plan, you know, or how, how that step's going to be done, but we all have to eventually agree that this is what's going to happen laid out and the timeline. And in that, we would look for the city to provide the detailed cost analysis. I mean, i- if you want, I can get you a bid from Lucas Construction, who does most of the county work, you know, based off of that same survey. And, but, you know, as a ballpark figure, you know, you're going to want to do your own bids, anyway. And a detailed funding plan. And there, again, that's not for Omega Bay to dictate and say, you have to do only this one type of funding plan. That, there are options open to the city. So we would be looking and, and be, to be to detailed funding plan, the city to establish the funding method for the roads and canals. And then that funding method should have a timeline and be secured for the OB roads to be transferred. But that is based on the contract. That part is negotiable about the transfer. But any funding method, if it's, let's say you go voter approval, and, and we've transferred these roads, and you can't get the funding, then they're going to have to revert back. You know, I mean, what, what good does it do for Omega Bay if you just sit there in limbo, say, well, we didn't get the funding. Nothing we can do about it. And that's where the, you go for county bonds, grants. That is the city's choice, how they choose to do it. Whether they choose to do a TERS bond or, you know, it doesn't matter. You know, that, that's the city's choice.
Okay.
Any questions about that?
Have you completed item, that was your, your explanation for item two?
Sir?
Was that your explanation for item two? For item two?
Yeah.
What you just shared with us, was that your explanation for item two on this list?
Yeah.
Very good. Council, do we have any, any clarifying questions for Mr. Mitchich? And then I'll bring you back in, Doug, for item two.
Well, he, he brings up...
Ms. Shansi and then Mayor Protem. No, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Shansi. He, he deferred to you.
Okay, um, so to be double I about the funding... Okay, um, so to be double I about the funding mechanism, we all know that takes time to do that. And we have roads, particularly in my district, that, you know, you, a member, city manager, you talk to us about how much it is. So I guess the question should be, what is a reasonable timeframe? Because as you know, as a former council person, how long it takes to find that type of funding for roads? How many streets do y'all have that need to be uh transferred over, needs to be worked on? Do we know how many?
Do y'all have a, uh, uh, do y'all have a, uh?
Brent, could, could you join us at the table, please?
Would Brent have that information?
I, that's what I'd like to ask. I don't know what.
Brent said he didn't have that.
Okay. So that's why we need to get that information. So we will, we can um since it's just a discussion, we're not taking any action, we're just discussing. So we could get that information, you know, how many roads we're talking about. Um, because it does take a lot of money to find, to find it. So then I guess we gotta determine.
And, and um, if I can, one of the things that this council, this body's already authorized us to do, uh, that, that is being worked on. JB, you have the mileage.
Yeah, we need a, we need, we need you to get to a microphone, sir. Thank you.
As he's coming up to the mic, Mayor, if, if we can, um, one of the things that we did do is my council took this action to add Omega Bay to the streets uh assessment that we're doing. And, and Adico has already started doing that. So we'll have not only figures of the assessment of how bad they are, but also the condition and approximate timeframe of what it would cost.
Before you go, JB, Caesar, you said we've added the Omega Bay streets to our analysis.
Yes, sir.
Our street analysis. Will that analysis provide for a detailed cost?
Not a detailed, detailed cost, but a very strong consideration of what the cost may be.
Very good.
We have seventeen.
Seventeen streets.
Thank you.
Do we know how long uh as far as footage, those seventeen streets are? Not individually, but as a, as a whole?
It was in the survey that uh Mr. Porcica had sent.
Yep, okay. Y'all have all that information. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Uh, Joe, you wanted to get in, uh, uh, Mayor Proton, you wanted to add?
I know we're focusing on, on streets, but it's on, you know, kind of been down this road on some other things. So it's uh, for me, I'm looking at my comprehensive list, if I had a checklist. And um, and I think you made the comment, um, or someone made the comment on um basically the city taking over all responsibilities. Uh, and I just want to make sure that we're also incorporating in our just discussion, if this is, makes sense. Not just the streets, but the other needs. Uh, I want to know what the, the obligation that we're assuming or that we would be assuming in total. I heard streetlights, uh, Mr. City Manager. Um, we don't provide you the water, do we? Yeah, that's the, the, the mud district out there. Uh, what else, Mr. City Man? We don't provide, Mr. Engineer, what else? What is it that we don't provide in terms of infrastructure out there, other than roads? Grainage and stuff, that's not anything that we're obligated for.
It was Mayor, uh, Mayor Proton, we do not uh address water or sewer. But beside water sewer, we do take care of sanitation, we do take care of all those other things now. It is built to them.
The sanitation, the, with, through our contract with uh with waste management, uh, how about, and the dredging was brought up. Is the waterways are public waterways, right?
Under, we, we had a very interesting call, and Mr. Garcia set that up and, and it was good. Uh, under GLO, under the state, there are no uh grants available from the state at all for dredging the canals. Um, all canals, whether Omega Bay, Tiki Island, Bio Vista, or wherever they're at in the state, they're considered private. They only address the, the public outer waterway, which would be the Highland Bio area, uh, Jones Lake. Um, and as some of you may have seen, Tiki was just having some dredging done on their perimeter. So that was GLO, but not on the interior. That all has to be privately funded.
So it, to that extent, that comment that you just made, would I be fair in saying that that's an obligation with regard to the canals and dredging, that the HOA will continue to assume?
No, we, we have never done the dredging on the H, you know, from the HOA at all.
Because certainly we're restricted under state law to do anything on private, to enhance a private uh area.
Well, the waterways are open to the public. The definition that GLO looks at is once it enters a community or anything, they consider private. They don't, they don't look at ownership or anything. You can't own that water. You know, I can't own that canal. I can, by the HOA standards in there, we can restrict what goes in it as far as a boat dock or something like that. But we can't.
When you, when you, uh, my uncle, we, we did some housing out there when it originally was. I, I'm trying to think of the original uh surveys, if I'm not mistaken. The, when you get your, your ser- survey, when you purchased your property out there, it extended into the, into the canal?
No, it does.
No, okay, alright. So your property, there's a, a specific property line designation that does not include the canal.
Correct.
Alright, so it, uh, Mayor and Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Engineer, all of it, this is gonna be a team effort. We need clarity, in my opinion, with regard to the responsibilities of the canal maintenance, just the whole general category of maintenance. Does that make sense, Mr. Mishich, in terms of our discussion?
The, the village of Tiki Island, they have, because they're a city.
Yeah, which is all built on canals, right?
They have the responsibility for their canals.
Yeah, that, that.
So, so wait, 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 wait. So, so did I've, do you want to go before my question or it, it doesn't matter, go ahead.
So, so my question would be, who maintains the canals now as far as who the fundraise is right now?
That's what I was gonna uh answer, but Mayor, I'll, I'll wait till.
So, so, so Mr. Mishich, you just said to us that the canals are private, yes?
By definition of the state.
By definition of.
Don't say they're private. I, we don't say you can't come down.
No, 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 I don't mean that. But, but what I'm saying is, I'm saying is they're private and the definition uh, uh of, of private for me in this context would be the opposite of public. Which means uh that theoretically, theoretically, we cannot expend public funds to maintain or dredge canals. And that's okay, it's okay. There, there's more than one way, right, to skin a cat. But we're just trying to bring clarity here. So according to what you just said to us, uh, this reversion contract, uh, canal dredging may not be something that we would necessarily be able to provide for a timetable or even, even a funding mechanism that might be associated with the city of Lamarck. Because they're private. Now, my question for you is, and then I'll bring in Doug before I bring in uh, uh, Caesar. How did Tiki Island, because you said Tiki Island, I believe you said, they just dredged their canals, correct?
On the, at perimeter.
On the perimeter.
Were they private or public? The ones that they dredged?
The perimeter is, is consi- by GLO standards, they're, they're public because part of it was Jones Lake, part of it was West Bay. It's the entire perimeter. But just like Bio Vista and Tiki, the inside, you know, each of those cities maintain those canals.
So, so for clarity purposes.
In public money.
Go back. You said each of those cities maintain the public canals?
The, the interior canals, which GLO considers private.
But the cities use taxpayer dollars.
Correct.
To dredge what's considered private property.
Within their boundaries. It's within their city boundaries.
Okay. And are those streets considered private or public? Within Tiki?
They're public in uh, uh, Tiki and Bio Vista.
So they're public streets, then for, they're probably considered public canals? I mean, me- meaning, meaning why?
What, so they're, they're all considered, I consider them all public, even ours, but GLO standards, they won't touch anything on an interior. And so they just say it's private. You know, for, for their definition. Though you were on that call, you got.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's, that's why I wanted to, that's why I was clarifying that point.
Yeah.
What it sounds like to me is it's like forty-five is the state taking care of it, where Cedar would be us taking care of it. That's, that's what they're, what GLO is looking at it as.
So I wanted to get Doug in from the tourist perspective on this, this uh, uh, second bullet point. And, and the discussion uh in particular around the canals. How, how does the tourist feel about what we're?
Uh, so we don't feel.
We need a microphone, Doug.
On the tourist side, we, we don't see that canals have to necessarily be involved in this contract. That we state.
Okay.
Uh, if it is, that's fine. If it's not, it's not a deal breaker as far as the TERS is concerned. I mean, the TERS main concern is new roads.
Okay.
And then, and that's, that's been the objective ever since we started that, so.
Very good. Again, uh, what we're trying to do is bring clarity uh so that we can know how to go about achieving this goal, right? Uh, just because we're talking what's public and what's private, uh, does not mean that we won't do uh as mayor. Uh, and I believe this council agrees, uh, we won't do everything in our power to legally provide for assistance. Even uh the dredging of canals, we're just trying to understand the issue. Gus, uh, Mr. Mishich has asserted that uh Tiki Island, the village of Tiki Island and the city of Bio Vista have used taxpayer dollars to dredge canals that are considered, I believe, private. Do you have an understanding of what Mr. Mishich is referring to?
I would have to look at how they, at how those entities did it and how the, and, and how the plat of those entities compares to Omega Bay.
Okay, okay.
Mayor, I'd like, Mayor, I'd like to propose something, the uh, as a consideration. The canals within Bio Vista and within Tiki Island, the interior canals. Uh, that's all within their city jurisdiction, their boundaries. And, and realistically, the canals in Omega Bay are part of the city's jurisdiction already and within your city boundaries. So we should have been looking at this all along and, as, as something that the city could have helped with. You know, they're, they're not owned by the HOA.
Are they owned by the property owner?
No, they're not. You know, so it's already within your jurisdiction, just like Bio Vista and Tiki.
But hey.
I'm sorry.
And then, and then we'll get you.
Robert, it kind of, I'm an older guy, right? I remember the development and the, that whole area. Was of course just like this, the, what's it called, that weed, uh, that grass that's on the other side?
Marshland.
That marshland was all like that, right? And when um, the developer came in, he owned all that land. So basically he owned the, the, the canals that we're now seeing now that, that did not exist, which is part of this marshland. So Gus is accurate in saying, we have to, in terms of, in, in my opinion, a proper procedure, we, we need to examine the documents that are associated with Tiki Island, that would be public, the charter uh, or documents, how did they, and um, and unfortunately, the reality is, we're, we're a small little city, right? These were issues being the first TERS that we had as a city that were not, that we didn't quite uh understand. So so that's why I was asking the question. In my mind, in my checklist, I'm, I'm going down my checklist.
Right.
And saying, this is from my experience, these are the things I need to understand so that we have no confusion. The problems of Lamarck is confusion, right? The problem of Lamarck is we never put things down in writing. Uh, and, and, and then we get these, these terrible, terrible disagreements that are not what neighbors should be doing.
Yeah, and, and to follow on, along with that reasoning, Mayor Proton, a- and that's been my, I mean, obviously you lived it, it's, it's just been what I've heard, but that this land was all owned by a developer. Utility, the, the, the streets and the canals were not dedicated to the city. The streets are, are, are private. And, and we're here to discuss that, but if these improvements were not dedicated to the city, the city doesn't own them. Somebody does. And that's what we're trying to get to the bottom. Because to spend public dollars, we gotta figure that out.
Right.
So now, the next thing on my checklist, by the way.
You're coming through.
But I'm on a roll here, so just give me.
Roll with it.
Roll.
So on my checklist is the, the utility easements, Doug. Where, where, were they, were they held by the, the developer provided the easements? What, that's a question. I'm just, my question, right? I don't, I don't expect an answer.
Yes, the developer provided, provided, you know, in, in their development, just like any of them that we do today.
Right.
You know, they lay out those easements.
And are they underground or are they above?
We have both.
Both?
We have, we have a electrical area right along uh I forty-five, uh, everything else is buried.
Area, okay.
Uh, well, I take that back, we have uh cable TV, comes in aerial, then it goes buried.
Hmm, hmm. Okay, um, and then uh, of course, lo- logically, which we already provide is police and fire services in, in the area as well as uh EMS services. Um, so um, I'm just mentally going through my, my checklist. So thanks, thank you all.
Mr. Garcia.
Um, one of the things in the conversation that we were on that uh we invited Mr. Mishich to join with the GLO was the consideration and subsequent talks that I've had, the consideration that if, right, if these streets were turned over to become uh, uh, public roads, that then a consideration may be made at that time for possible funding. Similar to what has probably been done in these cases. What the point that Gus was trying to make is due to the dedication having been made originally as private roads, that's the hesitation that they gave us. They have a very, it, it's, it's a very, they showed us the map, they showed us the aerial, they went through every single pocket, what was, what wasn't. And that is our challenge that we've had. But we cannot even take that first step to the possibility of what they may be able to consider until this occurs. Until then, until that time, what they told us and guided us on is that until then, it is considered private and it is a responsibility that falls on who the owner is. And this state right now, as we see it today, the owner of those streets is the HOA.
Thank you, sir.
That was just, I want to provide that context so we understood where we were and where we weren't.
Take one.
One stack. I think she's trying to say one catty corner stack.
Okay, just take one and, and pass it down.
One stack, the whole stack.
Oh, oh, stack, I got you, I got you.
Just so everyone is aware, the documents that you all were just given were the creation document, uh, the ordinance that created the TERS board, as well as the covenants, uh, the two sections of covenants from the Omega Bay subdivision.
Were you done, uh, uh, Mr. Garcia?
I was, man. I just wanted to make that point for, for clarification to follow up on the call that we were on, for, for the context of everybody here involved.
So for clarity, Gus, we need to understand this, this uh argument, uh, and I don't mean argument like there's an argument, but, but this idea uh that Mr. Mishich has brought forth as it relates to canal dredging. What did, what does GLO mean uh when they say those canals are private? Uh, is there an owner of those canals, private owner? We need to have all of that information. Again, more than one way to skin a cat, the city of Lamarck is here for Omega Bay, but we have to have the blueprint from which to move. Uh, Mr. Mishich, I had a couple of questions for you. Uh, you said uh that um, it didn't, uh, it did not matter to the residents of Omega Bay, uh, the homeowners association, uh, which uh organization or entity we would use to receive uh bids for the cost analysis, right? Doesn't, it doesn't matter to you, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the city's, you know.
Okay. And so, so if this.
I mean, I could get you a cost analysis, but.
But, but if we, if we, just again, trying to, trying to bring clarity, if we uh, uh, if we did a cost analysis uh and it was lower than what perhaps your expectations were, then that doesn't, long, as so long as the job is completed uh according to uh state standards. Uh, according to uh, state standards, uh, uh, and, and city ordinances, that would be fine.
Correct. You, you say state standards and city ordinances, uh. I know you're aware that our roads today would not meet a new development state standard, so we, we couldn't say that. It would have to be as they are, you know. Or to the width and size they are.
So my point, I guess, would be so long as, so long as, as uh. That analysis, uh, that's provided would be consistent with what would be necessary for us to legally. Uh, adopt those streets, that would be fine to the people of Omega Bay.
That will have to go to a vote to the residents.
Sure, but I mean, the, just as far as the analysis, that would be fine.
Yes.
Okay. The second thing I, I wanted clarification on is in item B, Mr. Mishich. I do understand B two, funding methods shall have timeline and secured for. Uh, Omega Bay roads to be transferred, uh, any funding method subject to the failure of voter approval. In other words, if we were to do a bond, right, and that bond failed, I can understand that part. Here's the part I wanted you to clarify, our unknown future county bonds or grants shall be a part of. Timeline and will constitute a failure to provide city funding. Explain that, please.
That's if you chose that method, you know, um. And you, the part about their uh, secured for the OB roads to be transferred, no. That wouldn't, you wouldn't have to secure the money before we do that, that uh, that's a error on my part there. It, it will come out once a contract is established, you know. We would have to go back for a vote to the homeowners once we establish a contract. Uh, but what you're talking about here, I was just giving the examples, it doesn't matter what you do for funding. That's, that's the city's responsibility, however you choose, you know.
Sure, yeah, finish your statement, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Okay, so to, so that I can understand, you're suggesting that if, for example, uh. Omega Bay streets were included in a overall county bond package and that bond package failed. Then that would constitute a failure, is that what you're trying to suggest?
Any, any of it would, yes.
Not simply that we chose to include it in a bond package that uh, is county initiated. But it, it would be tied to a failed vote.
Correct, it would be your choice, it would be the city's choice.
Got you.
Do that.
But I mean, but, but, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, your idea of constituting a failure would be a failed vote.
Correct.
Got you, got you.
So. Trying to catch up with all this and, and summarize it for myself. Your streets are privately owned through the HOA. We can't get funding unless the city already owns them or can, can we wait to transfer the streets over to the city? After the funding is approved. That's, that's, maybe that's a question for you, Gus.
Sure. The city cannot spend public dollars on private streets. I am not the city's bond counsel, but I am fairly confident that. Bond counsel would not sign off on a bond issuance for private streets. On, on the, what is essentially, as they all are, the contractual promise that they would become public. They, they need to be public.
Right, so, so however, however, what, and I, and I think I, to shed light on this, the city can. Uh, provide for a, a uh, uh, bond election where there is a dollar figure. Associated to street repair and reconstruction. Right? We, we can do that. And then if after that, uh, the Omega Bay residents vote to. Uh, to donate their streets or give their streets to the city, then they could be. Uh, theoretically, they could be repaired or reconstructed with this voter approved.
I, I would need to look at that, but yes.
Okay, let's get, let's get clear.
And, and the reason these are, are private is that way back in nineteen seventy-six, when the plat was approved. It said the streets would be private.
Right, right, right. But that, that's a question that we need answered, right?
No, that's what it said.
No, no, I, I mean, the part that, that if we were to, as a city.
Oh, yes, yes.
If we were to say, uh, part of this proposal, uh, we are, um, uh, we are. Asking you to decide on whether or not we want to spend uh, twenty million dollars in street repair and reconstruction. We need the answer to, if the voters approve that.
Right.
Let me stop here, uh, we would also say in that to our, our, our residents. Um, if this is approved, uh, there, a, a portion of this, uh, may be earmarked towards Omega Bay. We would be open to, with the people.
I would need to confirm that.
Okay, because we, we want to make sure that we, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, i- i- if I can also just to add to that, um, the back and forth is, is that fact that it's kind of the chicken and the egg, right? Which one comes first? So back to your, your point, Councilman Ross, in this case. GLO won't even consider funding if we don't own the streets, and then the thought process, correct me if I'm wrong, from the HOA is that. They don't want to give up the streets without a guarantee.
Sure.
And we can't give up a guarantee until we even know what the funding would be, and that's true for bond and for grants, whichever route that we choose to go. And that's where the proverb, the proverbial chicken and the egg situation that I think we all agree that that's why we're in it.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Garcia, uh, because. You know, you wouldn't want to uh, put money out there and then have a community vote that says, no, we don't want to do it anyway. Yeah, the, the idea is, you know, once that agreement is in. Then things would move forward on that, but uh, you know, we're, we'd still be looking at a timeline and. And the commitment to get it completed.
And.
Uh, I'd like to back up one thing on the GLO stuff, uh, maybe we can re, reconvene that call with uh. Uh, GLO because I, I didn't get from her that there would be advantage on the canals. Uh, dredging, you know, with the roads being, you know, donated, I, I, I didn't get that from her. Uh, it was still the same aspect from the state, they, they won't do it. So, but I'd, I'd like to get a call together, you know, with.
Absolutely, and that was part of the situation that we can't even commence that until we figure out.
Yeah.
You know, what we're gonna do.
Are you keeping, keeping track of the task that we are tasking, uh, the city manager and the city attorney with? We want, we will have a recap after so that we're all on the same page. Doug. Talk to us a little bit about uh, this idea from a tourist perspective. Al, you, you, you're talking so much, Al, they had to take the microphone from you.
So once again, Mr. Murray, what, what was the question?
The, the, the idea that uh, the Omega Bay residents would prefer. Uh, for us to secure some sort of funding before you take a vote to give your streets to the city of Lamarck.
I, I, I believe. They, I can't speak for all the residents, but I mean, as far as the Ters board, I mean, our, our main goal is to get. New roads implemented into our subdivision. As far as funding, I, I think they would want some kind of guarantee, our understanding with that, that. We would have, in order to give everything up that we have, we would, we want some kind of guarantee that there would be. A funding or that there would be a promise made that these would be on a priority type deal.
Very good, I understand that.
And if I may, Mayor, to follow up on that, and she's not here, so I will. But I will attempt to summarize what Sue Darcy had said about this issue. Sue was, um, the consultant, the city retained. To assist with the creation of the Ters back a few years ago. Um, this was, this issue that we're discussing today was an issue then. Uh, when, and one of the ways I understand that was created to address it was the Ters itself. Is that the residents of Omega Bay wanted some assurances that they, the, that the streets would be fixed if they went to the city. So a Ters was created to establish, for lack of a better term, a pot of money. To, for that purpose, because the Ters funds are restricted to the financing plan. Um, so that's why it's there. Now, the financing plan is undergoing an amendment, uh, or an amendment, an update. Um, to see, you know, what, what could be done, what twenty nineteen was a different time and place. So it's being updated currently to reflect, um, Omega Bay's values have increased more than the plan set. But regardless, it's being updated so that council and the board may make, um. Informed decisions based on new documentation, and I assume that it wasn't created or hasn't been finished since I was out. Okay.
Okay. I thought Sue.
Okay, okay. Soon as you give your mic away.
Through an email this morning, Sue advised me that she hasn't had the financial advisor from the city contact her. Uh, we agreed in our last Ters meeting that we were gonna go forward, y'all had all approved the five thousand dollar. Gift to us to help with that. She hasn't heard anything from anyone in the city, she's still waiting to get that call. And there was one other little item in there that she was waiting for payment that we approved. A May meeting for her that she's waiting for, so uh, I think she's meeting with you and somebody else tomorrow.
Well, good, good.
So maybe y'all can clarify.
Mr. Garcia, can you?
Thank you, Council, thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, Mayor, all this will be carried out by tomorrow as far as the payment and so forth, as well as any other outstanding items.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have any questions for uh, Omega Bay, for the tourists or for Mr. Mishich on item two? Go ahead, Joe.
This is, I apologize for asking the question, but I need just clarity. And sometimes I have these moments, when we talk about the, the road and the roads. Is the expectation? If and when a bond is, is this set forth in a bond, that roadways will be constructed. At the same level or of the same quality that they are here? Is the footprint going to be larger or what's? You know, what's the, the thought process there? What's the expectation? Are we gonna now take asphalt roads and you're gonna be requiring concrete roads?
We, we were looking at the concrete road for all the perimeter road with the turn-in aprons. Those take the most abuse, you got your garbage trucks, all your heavy delivery, everything is that perimeter road. And then the interior roads at that apron turn-in, they would remain asphalt. Um, in my discussions with Lucas Construction, uh, they said we'd grind up everything that's there. But reuse all of that asphalt base and every, as part of your road base, you know, and, and go back in to re-black top. But, and they were talking about quoting a uh, six inch uh, uh, depth of cement road. For the perimeters.
Well, well, what is the, is the expectation that that outer perimeter roadway be? Hythoned in any way?
No.
No?
No.
Still the same?
It's same, it's same.
Okay.
Um, that way you're not changing any flooding or drainage or anything.
Okay. Any uh, further questions for uh, this group as it relates to item two? Let's move on to item three. Joe, I need to step out for about thirty seconds, uh, would you preside, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mishich, proceed with item three.
Okay, this, this comes into penalties and, or we call it penalties, but let's just say it's protections for Omega Bay. Uh. If the city fails to complete or comply or, or meet the reversion contract. It will result in triggering that reversion. Of any Omega Bay properties previously contain, conveyed to the city under the contract. Along with any improvements that may have been made during any phase of that contract. Cause it could get started and just one bit get done and get dropped. I mean, the whole council can change, we could have a new segment and everybody come in and say, ah. This back burner, the Omega Bay subdivision has to have some protection there, and that's, that's part of the reversion. Need me to go on to the next one?
Yes, please, once there's any, it's already necessary, but you, but no, all right, please.
And um, and B, Omega Bay will not, should not be liable for any cost or expenditures. Made by the city in connection with this contract. If a reversion is activated and the result is. Is because of the city failure to meet the contract obligations. You know, if we had to hire an attorney to say, look, they're not, the city is, you know, X, Y, Z in the future. The city is not, you know, meeting their contract, they're not doing their, what they've committed to. We need to make this reversion happen, and so we'd end up having to hire an attorney. And we're just saying that should be on the city, whoever, if the failure is on. Obviously, if there's a failure, I don't know. What Lamarck or, or Omega Bay would do to make the contract fail, but you know, it, it's on the city side. You know, for performance, and that's what that's about. Um, legal costs would go to you guys. Should I go on?
Are you still on item three, Mr. Mishich?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, you proceed.
And uh, C, under three C. The shitty, the, the city would be responsible for the legal cost association with the reversion. If they fail to meet the uh, obligation, that's almost, B and C is almost identical.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Well, now.
Uh, Robert on this one, and Doug, this is also directed to you. With regard to the work. The Ters has some budgeted monies already, correct?
Correct, correct.
And um, I, I, I would want an update on, on that, Mr. City Manager from our finance. What's there and, and um, what historically we have used. Over the Ters has used that, that funding for.
We've only used it one time to pay, or we haven't even used it yet, but it's, we gave authority to. Take out for Sue Darcy's payment.
Sue Darcy, okay, so legal fees, you, you.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, I could, do you want me to just tell you what the Ters reports say for the month, uh, for this past month? Would you like me to have them printed for you?
No, I think I'd like to see things in black and white.
Okay, I can, I've printed it right over.
Thank you, man. Mr. Mishich.
Yes, sir.
Proceed.
Item number three D is probably the one that's gonna give you the most heartburn.
Absolutely.
Uh, figured you'd. And, and you have to understand the position of the residents. Item three, three D is, given that if a re- reversion is activated. Because of city failure, the action may result, may. In Omega Bay disannexation proceedings, there's no guarantee on that, but it, it could. And hence, as a protection penalty to Omega Bay. And successful, if we chose that, disannexation. You have to understand, we're at a point here. Whereas if we chose to disannex now and were to file and go bring that before you. And it was successful and it goes to court and everything, they drop a gavel and said, dang, it's done. We would owe what current debt is paid annually. By the city, divided up between all taxing entities within the city, we would owe our share of that. And so what this would do, because you can't tell how long a contract goes. The city would waive and forgive the Omega Bay debt. That would have been owed had we chosen disannexation right now at the time of the contract. And because you may add more debt during this time, if this reversion contract is agreed upon. You may add more debt. And, and I'm sure you will, that would be excluded also. So basically, if that contract, if a reversion contract failed. You would be waiving the debt that we would owe. on on any of the city's debt.
So so I have I have a couple of things, Mr. Mishich, on on this. The first thing that I would say is this reversion contract, in my opinion, has to be limited to the streets and perhaps if if legal allows whatever we would do on the canal dredging. Because the city has, and it's painful, it really is painful, but the city has met its obligation thus far to Omega Bay in the areas of service that we are legally able to provide. We have provided for sanitation, we've provided for public safety, right? We have extended ourselves and provided for street lighting, as well as created a TERS to help the infrastructure on private streets. So if there were a discussion of de-annexation, and we both know that discussions of de-annexation are all hinged upon the idea that the city did not meet its obligation as relates to basic city services for residents of the city of Lamarck. We know that we have done everything that we are legally able to do, right? So for me, this reversion contract, first thoughts, first thoughts, has to be limited to the streets. The other thing about this this idea that if the city fails in its efforts, then that triggers a lot of, not only a reversion contract, which we're considering, but it it triggers basically our our non-action on on you all's pursuit of potentially de-annexation. The the heartburn that I have with that, Mr. Mishich, is that the vast majority of these decisions will not be on the backs of this five-member council, but it will be on the backs of the entire city of Lamarck, citizens, residents, voting up or down what they choose to expend their tax dollars on, their resources on. And so to suggest that if there is a a negative or a a no vote on potential funding for a general obligation bond, to suggest that somehow the city as an entity, as an organization, has failed triggering anything outside of a reversion contract really places the city as an institution, as an entity, in in a vulnerable position. Because we cannot, as a five-member council, as a city, we can't dictate the will of the people. And this funding will be tied toward the will of the people in a democratic vote. And so that's the heartburn, and you knew that that there would be heartburn. That's the heartburn with D. This is going to be voted on, in my understanding as mayor, by the people of Lamarck. And if they voted down, that does not necessarily mean that the city has failed to meet its obligation, right? And so that's where the heartburn is going to be on item D. Reversion contract, the streets go back to Omega Bay. I I understand your argument on that. But but to trigger some sort of some sort of non-action as it relates to a potential move by Omega Bay toward the annexation. First thoughts, first thoughts. I I can agree with you on that because I don't believe that the city would would be a failure in this effort if the people have not voted to approve debt to repair, replace, reconstruct your streets. And so that would be my area of heartburn on D. Would you like to respond to that? You don't have to.
Sure. And and that's, going back to the beginning, we're not dictating the method of funding to you. That that's up to the city to choose. And that's why it's written that way. This this item number D is for protection of Omega Bay should it happen. Because otherwise, we are not back to square one. We're farther down the line with with nothing happened. And your comments are before about disannexation, about the city performance and everything for Omega Bay. We'll just have to disagree on that one, then that's okay.
Thank you.
But you know, I I do not agree to those statements, so we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, sure.
But this is a this is a protection penalty, you might call it, for our department. You know, I go to a resident and I say, we want to vote, we're gonna send out some ballots. We want your support to donate our roads to the city. How do you think that's gonna go, you know, with everything that has been going on with the city? And and our most recent one with the FEMA letters, and I'm sure Mr. Confian got aware of, and Mr. Lowry was at that meeting. You know, it it doesn't fly very well, and so we have, we're looking at a way that we can go to the residents and say, here it is. And and quite frankly, a lot of residents moved into that community because they liked the idea of private roads and the privateness of the community. And I know that there are gonna be some of them, no matter what we come back with on a contract, they're gonna say, no, I don't want to do it. And will they say yes to disannexation? There's a whole lot that will, but there might be enough that says no. And if that's the case, they say, we don't want it. We want the we want the canals, we want the roads, but we're not willing to give up the streets. And we'll just stay status quo and limp it along. And and we will have to respect that. I will have to respect it too, you know. I can't predict what's gonna happen, but we have to craft something that is powerable to our residents, you know, to where they have trust, not only in the HOA and the TERS, but they have trust in the city. And and those are big things for all of us.
So a couple of things before Kim, Kim, Ms. Councilwoman Yancy, excuse me, makes comments. You alluded to with all of the things that are going on with the city, well, we would have to understand exactly with evidence and information what those issues are. The issue with with the meeting with FEMA, we'd have to understand your points, but we would also have to understand from our city manager exactly. And I think last meeting, I I asked him to give us a complete timeline of what those issues were with FEMA. Clearly FEMA has tried to contact the city and clearly myself as mayor, Councilman, uh, City Manager Garcia, we've we spoke to FEMA, we've we've met with FEMA. So that's incorrect information. We've had a telephone meeting with FEMA. So that's nonetheless, that's neither here nor there. We're not here to discuss this. But the issue, Mr. Mishich, that we have to go back to is the idea that the residents of Omega Bay are members of the great city of Lamarck, number one. But number two, the other issue is that we have, we have done everything in our power to provide services. We cannot by law provide services for streets, and that's the issue here. So Omega Bay residents are suffering with subpar streets. And I want us to understand the reason that we are, as a council, considering adopting those streets is an effort to assist the residents of Omega Bay. We are not, uh, uh, Omega Bay is not doing us a favor by giving us their streets. And we are not doing Omega Bay a favor by taking the streets. There are no favors being done here. We're doing what we need to do to provide as many services for our residents in Omega Bay as possible. That's our job, right? But at the same time, there has to be a collaboration, Mr. Mishich. And I think that as we move forward with this, with the idea of some sort of an agreement, we have to understand the reason that you all are here today is because you're tired of driving on subpar streets. That's the reason you're here, right? We are here because you are a part of our community, and we want you to drive on streets at the level of however good or bad they are, at the same level of those streets that are in the city of Lamarck, right? And so that's where we have to meet in the middle. And any agreement has to understand that. You all need help. We are doing everything legally that we can to help you. Neither side is doing any other side a favor. We just have to figure this out, right? And so I wanted to, I wanted to remind us that that's why we're here. And 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 that's why the, some of these things, the city failure to comply, the city's failure to comply, the city's failure to comply, that's why we have to find a better way to come to an agreement, so that that agreement can be reflective of what's truly happening here. You all need help. We want to help you, not as a favor, but as an obligation. But legally, we have to find a way to do it. And when we get there, we can move forward.
I would like to add, along those lines, the helping. We go back to the canals. Right now, they're within the legal jurisdiction and boundaries of the city limits of Lamarck, just like Biovista, Tiki, and anywhere else. So I would, I would want Gus to pursue that because that being the case, the city should already have responsibility for dredging of those canals. They are not owned by HOA or the mud or or anyone else. They are within the boundaries of the city of Lamarck. And you can't, you know,
But would you stipulate that perhaps they are, they are owned by the developer?
The developer doesn't own anything in there.
But we do need some clarity.
Someone has to own some, some, some.
You can't own that water.
For purposes of of taxpayer dollars, right? It has to be clear, and Gus will get more clarity, he'll bring more clarity. It has to be clear that the city has a legal obligation to dredge those canals. And if, and here's, here's what I'm saying to you as mayor. If the city attorney provides for an opinion that we can do that, I will be the first person to come back to the table to find ways to do that. So this is not a matter of whether or not, as mayor, I can't speak for the other four of us. This is not an issue on whether or not we, I want to. This is us trying to ensure that legally we can do, right? And so I want to, I want to assure you that that's not the issue. We just gotta have to make sure we can. Doug, did you, I'm sorry, Ms. Yancy and then Doug.
A quick, look at Galveston CAD, and then you look at their maps. It it shows no one owning
No one.
Those canals. Outside the canals, you can see plots of land of land that are owned by several individuals, but that are over water boundaries, but the canals show blanks on it.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that, Doug.
Mayor, may I expand on that?
Yes.
So this is what the conundrum was with our conversation with with the GLO, where we asked the same question. Who owns them so we can hold whoever owns them responsible, right? Whoever owns them is responsible. In this case, they're not even considered right-of-way. Right? Right now, if somebody wants to go fishing there technically, right? Who's stopping them? There's no gate and whatever the case, someone can bring their boat in all the way down. Problem is, is it's not open for public fishing or anything else, and that's what the difference is. Right now, today, as we stand, by the GLO standard, they are not considered public. They're not considered state, and they're not considered the cities. They understand them to be private, tied to the ownership of the road because the water abudes the roads. And that's where we stand as of right now, as per their definition that they gave us. For that to change, we would need to retain ownership and make them public roads. And then at that time, they would then be considered public canals, which at that time, we may be able to be eligible for some funding for them. And that's the conundrum we're in now. For that to happen, HOA would have to give up ownership, and they don't want to do so without some form of guarantee that we're gonna put in our end of the bargain. And that is again where we're at. Does that summarize everything for the most part?
Well, I'd like, like I say, I'd like for you to reconvene that call with GLO, because I I didn't get that totally from her.
Are you willing to do that, Mr. Garcia?
Absolutely. The one thing that they did say is they won't even consider for funding the way it stands now.
But but you will be.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Ms. Yancy, did you get a chance to speak?
No.
And then, and then I see Mayor protect.
So this is my first time seeing this present, this proposal that was given to us today. I don't know if we had it prior to the day. I didn't. But the first thing, you know, as a history teacher, anytime you see the word de-annexation, you kind of get concerned when you, when you see that word. So D is a non-negotiable for me. And I think that's too tough of a penalty for something that I think that Omega Bay is is a part of our community. And I wouldn't think that they would want to not be a part of our community. I grew up in Galveston County and I like Joe, we've seen it grow, we've seen it. It's a beautiful place. And that's, some of us that are on the council, we have behind the scenes, basically wanted to give you everything that you needed for it to be a nice place. And so I don't think anyone really likes that word, the de-annexation. My mother worked in Lamarck, and I remember years ago, there was talk about that. But it was just talk. And for me, Mayor, I I really, I represent District A, which is the largest district, and probably, probably like D, that want some of the oldest parts of the city. And a lot of our residents have concerns about their streets and their roads. And I do think it is important that we do a bond that would help some of that. It is very expensive, though. And that's why I was telling you to kind of come back to let us know about that. But I don't, D is a non-negotiable for me. I I don't think that that should be a part of the of of it. I think we, this council, has listened to y'all, you all, more than any other council that I've seen. As far as the lighting, I was on that council when we did that, correct? I was on that council when we talked about the the dredging. There are some things that we can look at, Joe. I know with with H-GAC, we had talked about a little bit about that. But again, it was a whole issue of public versus private. And so I am willing to 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 have the roads. And like you said, I think you said roads, and what else was it? The, it was roads and some, the canals. I think that D is too much, that language is too strong. And it looks, if I'm looking at this for the first time, when I first read it for the first time, it looked like a trap. And I I I am obligated to my residents, because I, even though I represent A, I live in C, I live in your district. And that's too much, that's a non-negotiable for me.
So we can, we we've sat here all day and we've pretty much said the same thing. And I feel like the the guy with his shoe nailed to the floor and just walking around in circles. So the big thing is, we can't do anything with the streets until we have the streets. We can't, then we can ask for money. So is there a timeline on how long for us to be able to get a bond? Because maybe the bond doesn't pass this time for streets, but it does pass for a public safety building, so we can get our police in a new station. So next year, we come back for another bond. Is there a timeline there, or is it, oh, first election, it's a failure? We, that's because reading this, that's what it is. We may make a good faith effort, and the citizens say no on streets this time, but yes on something else. And it's not a failure. We're, we decided the police need to get out of that place over there and into a bigger one this time. And next year, we'll go for streets. So what, I mean, where, what is the timeline on on us getting funding or us getting grants? I mean.
That's all in a bond.
So whether we go bond or grants, that's, that's what that situation is. So what, what the situation is, and I mean, at this point, everybody's probably seen where we are with the actual plat, right? I mean, what's going on? And unfortunately, this was a deal that was made probably before any of us were involved, right? Any of us were involved in that, this is what was going on, right? The problem is, is that this is kind of what the forefathers, original residents, original people that were here, this is kind of what they signed up for, is they're private. And that's what it's considered, according to what I'm reading here. So I'll be responsible for the construction of roads, canals, drainage, and then also the maintenance of it. Responsible to maintain forever the roads, canals, water and sewer distribution. Now, obviously, you have the mud. But that's according to the plat, that that's according to what the plat says. So that's, that's probably why, at this point, the GLO is saying not till that gets resolved.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that?
I think we also need to take into consideration what what they're paying versus another home in the city of Lamarck. This is our highest tax base.
So what what do they get?
They're paying the most taxes, but for what? That needs to be taken into consideration.
And as such, I I I do agree, Councilman Lowry, I just our hands are tied based on what's legally in place right now.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's the, the consideration.
Certainly, we would want to promise them the world. Uh, uh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
We've lived in Omega Bay for 15 years plus. And the reason of D is the distrust we have of the city. Because for 15 years, we've heard all this. We've heard all this. Omega Bay pays out every year to the city over $500,000 in taxes. Over $500,000 every year. We get trash service, which we pay for. And just recently, we started getting better lights, streetlights. Over $500,000 a year. That's a pretty hefty bill for trash and streetlights.
Well, let, let me, let, let, let me, let me say this, let me say this. Again, I, I believe that we recognize that. We, we do. We recognize that Omega Bay uh, pays taxes into our city coffers. The city provides everything that we are legally, legally able to provide. Again, we would, this, this is a no, as far as I'm concerned, I'm one vote. This is a no-brainer. Of course, if we were legally able to provide for street maintenance, repair and reconstruction. I would be the first person to make sure that those areas are incorporated into our city budget. The dilemma, how, however frustrating it is, is surrounding the idea that these are private streets. And it is illegal as much money as we have seen. Councilmember Lowry has said that's a lot of money. It is a lot of money. But legally, right? We, we have to provide for, for legal services that we are legally able to provide. Right? Now, now in the, you said you've lived there for 15 years. In the last, in the, in the last three years, we have provided for streetlights. We have added more public safety patrols and we have even given the residents of Omega Bay a tax rebate in the form of a TERS, right? So we, so, so, so that your, the tax revenue that you are, that you are uh, expending toward the uh, city, city of Lamarck. That's capped now. And so any uh, increases over that tied to valuation, right? They're going back into the Omega Bay TERS and that isn't happening in the other parts of the city. And I said all of that to say, we get that it's frustrating. We want to do the right thing, but it has to be legal. Aside from that, we are still, previous council to this one, because this council hadn't acted. We are still moving toward doing everything in our power to try to provide as many services as we can legally.
I understand and um, my response was to explain D to Ms. Yancy. And that is because most of the people in Omega Bay, and I'm a block captain. I go to a lot of homes and talk to a lot of people. And um, there's distrust. There has been distrust and that's why this is, this is just because we've been told all this for 15 years. I've been told this.
But in the last three.
There's a lot of other people that lived there for 25 years and have said, we've been told this. So this is why, you know, thank you for some of the actions you've done. But still, this is why D is stated the way it is.
Well, let me say this and, and I'm going to reiterate what the mayor said. We have done everything, we've done all that we can do. And this council has done everything that we can do legally. Prior to what happened, I wasn't here, but I'm an advocate for Omega Bay. My, my heartburn is the sentence where it says DX annexation proceedings. That's my heartburn right there. That's my heartburn, that word. My heartburn is that word. And that word needs to be taken out. That's the part that I'm concerned with. Um, I love Omega Bay. I love what it represents. I grew up in Galveston County. Um, and I have been an advocate and I have listened and all of us here. But now we're at a standstill that we can't do anything more until um, you guys, you're public. Uh, Doug and I have talked about it. Um, he was my trainer for Alicia Maylin. And so um, we have done everything we can. I just have heartburn with that word. That's it. I, I just don't want that to be um, it's too strong of a word. You know what I mean? It's too strong. We could just, we need to take that out. I don't have a problem with anything else. It's just that word.
Mr. Missage.
Can I uh, ask for some clarification on that, Ms. uh, Councilman Yancy?
Uh huh.
Um, when we say disannexation, how, how does the council feel about the uh, um, if a reversion contract is, is agreed to executed, we can come to terms on timelines and everything? And there's a failure on the city park? And a reversion is triggered to Omega Bay? How is council on agreeing to waiving of any debt that would be owed by Omega Bay should they choose to disannex? Or, or, and that doesn't mean they'll be successful at it. But, but they may choose to, to uh, pursue that. How, how does this council feel about including?
What does that mean?
That kind of. I, I was, can I clarify what, make sure I personally understand just for the sake? The question being asked is how does council feel if we agree to go out to debt? And for whatever reason, the debt is not possible, the stuff doesn't happen in a timely manner, which is what stated in here. But yet the city is stuck with a debt to clear Omega Bay from being involved with the debt?
No, no. Um, I'm talking about anything in, in the contract. We, we, whatever we agree to in a contract, in a, in a reversion contract. If there is a failure, it doesn't matter what it is. And I mean, there's leniency on both ways. But i- if it just is not going to work out and, and it's got to revert back to Omega Bay. More than likely, Omega Bay will probably try to pursue a disannexation under that, under that.
That's what I said.
So what is council's position of including the penalty of a lot, of forgiving any debt? If that action was chosen of forgiving any debt to that community of.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and then, and Doug.
Just, just been kindly, Robert, this is a point of order. We, we can't take, what, what you're asking, we can't do here today, right? That would be considered.
Well, we're, we're, we're asking for, in this discussion, you know, can we reach some common agreements to even move forward? Uh, with establishing some sort of a contract?
We, we can't.
Yeah, the, the meeting is not noticed for that, mayor. The meeting is not for a discussion. And with any city contract, and I would ask any client. Let me look at what the, has a lawyer, because a lawyer has not reviewed this for you all, have they?
No.
Will one review it for you?
We discussed this with an attorney, another attorney of town reversion contracts.
Who?
Uh, it was Mr. Russo.
Chris Russo?
Joe.
Joe Russo. Okay, okay. I know Joe. I'll call him.
And um, yeah, there was another attorney in his.
In his office?
Yeah, we did not engage them, but these were discussion. And uh,
Regardless, I need to look at this and because there have been a number of, a number of you have said, if we can do it legally. Well, I need to tell y'all that. And I would, I would caution you against a understanding that we will do this before I've told you, you can.
Right, right.
Or, or any, i- if you, anyone has told you.
You can't discuss what you don't understand.
I'm sorry, Joe. I thought you.
The second, besides, in my checklist that I referred to, I'm going here. Uh, and thanks for these documents. I'm already enjoying reading what I see here. Although with my old eyes, I need bigger, more, more light, which I have, by the way. I have my, my bright light here. I can see this better. The um, now I have to figure out how to turn it off or go. The um, I, I do want Doug, I mean Doug, uh, sorry, well, Doug, it would be appropriate and, and Gus. The um, uh, state law does, the section forty uh, three, one, one forty-two does specifically provide uh, a procedure for a home rule city. And one of the, as I'm reading this uh, section, it does specifically state that uh, we need to take a look initially at our own charter to see what language we have in our charter with regard to disannexation. So I, that checklist and I'll leave it to our capable city attorney. But that's my starting point, me individually. I want to take a look at what our charter says. There is a methodology here that can be worked out. Let me assure you. But as I, I'm this person that I want to follow what, what we're required to do because that's our problem Lamarck. We don't, we, we, you know, I've been around long enough. Don't worry about it. Just go do that. Go, go take that stuff off that layout or whatever it is. I, I'm trying to avoid that sort of situation. Let's do it right. And I think we all share, share that. One other part, just to by way of uh, information, there is a section here as well too. Uh, with regard to a disannexation petition if the services are not provided. So I find that interesting in terms of if there's a failure to honor some sort of agreement that we reached. There are still some uh, method, methods available apparently under state law that you can still utilize up outside the, any agreement that we may come to. That's all my comment.
Very good. Doug, did you want to?
I just wanted to, I, I know we were having confusion on this uh, debt thing and I think, and I might be wrong, but I think what Robert's asking is, I mean, if we signed the contract today and you inherit a hundred million dollars in debt and four years from now, the con- contract is reversed. We don't want to be liable for that hundred million dollars worth of debt is what I think he's trying to say.
A- as a, as an entity?
As an entity.
So not, not necessarily debt that is associated with Omega Bay? But you're suggesting debt that is incurred by the city on behalf of all of the city of Lamarck?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Microphone.
I have a question as far as if we were to donate the streets to Lamarck. What happens to that money that we've been accumulating in the tiers?
Good question.
Okay, because is that money going to go towards the improvements? I mean, because as a board member, I'll be honest with you, I really hate to lose that money.
Sure.
Or to have that money reacquired into the city budget because, because I feel like, well, I'm choking. Because I feel like that is um, our way of getting our streets um, paved.
Sure.
And I'm not, I don't know if I'm really, I mean, what happens to the tiers board? Now, this took us years to get this.
Right.
You know, so what is our plan for that money? If we were to donate and what would happen to the tiers board or just, okay, y'all don't have anything to say about the streets anymore? I mean, just ask my question.
Did you want to ask that again?
Yeah, so the TERS is there so that when the streets are donated to the city, there will be an income stream to fix them. That's why it's there. A- as it sits today, the money can't be used for that. So the city years ago set up this income stream that so the, this plan to fix the streets, that's what the TERS board would be. So it, not necessarily overseeing per se, but that's where the money would be going.
So, so it, it, it would, it would not be reintroduced into our general fund. This would, this money would still be earmarked for the repair, maintenance and reconstruction of those, of streets in Omega Bay.
That, that's why it was set up.
So that means that the TERS board would still have work to do.
Correct.
They would not be dissolved in, in any way.
Not unless somebody does something to that, but, but no. Stur- the streets coming to the city would not dissolve the TERS board.
Let me say, I, I want to drill back. I, I want to circle back about this, 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 this idea of uh, many of our residents in Omega Bay have lived in Omega Bay, Bay for quite some time. We have been at this. I've been there 20 years. I can remember going to Bayou Vista and having a meeting one, one, two years into this, into my, my service here for this city. And we were talking about the same thing. You are right. Here's a question. Here's a question. How many votes have the residents of Omega, Omega Bay taken to give their streets to the city of Lamarck in that time? In 20 years, how many votes have, how many official votes have the residents taken to give their streets to the city of Lamarck? You know, one, you, you, Al, Al, you need a mic. You, we had to take your mic because you're talking so much, but apparently you have some information, so.
Mayor, I'm only aware of one vote that was taken and the citizens did approve to turn the streets over, but nothing was never done.
When was that vote?
I, I don't remember the, the timeframe, but I remember the, the, the councilman that was pro tem before you. Uh, no, that was mayor. Uh, it, it doesn't.
Was it James Osteen?
Oh, oh, Osteen.
James Osteen.
Yeah, he was working with us. And it, it got to, to you folks and, and it, it blew up for some reason. I don't remember what the reason was, but there was a vote and it did come to board council and it just fell apart.
Did you remember Al? What, what, what year?
I don't. I don't.
Okay. Care, could we research that issue? Okay.
Who was the mayor? Do you remember the mayor maybe at the time?
That was uh, if it was James Osteen, that was probably Larry Crow. That was a Larry Crow deal.
That's over 20 years.
That sounds so bad. Not a Larry Crow deal, but Larry Crow. Let me, let me, let me protect my fellow mayor. Larry Crow was presiding uh, at that, as mayor. You're right. Okay. So that's the first thing that we want to see. We're a new council. Many of our members, I, I believe the uh, uh, Mr. Comprion has the most seniority. And I believe he's on his, on year four or five. So we're, we're, we're new as a council. These are pieces of information that we, as this council, that we need to know and understand. Because we don't want there to be any mistrust, nor do we want there to be any misinformation. Right? We are frustrated certainly, uh, but hopefully there's a, a silver lining in the idea that the past three years, we have the previous council, we've done a lot of work toward Omega Bay. That's the good news. We hadn't crossed the finish line yet, uh, but we are on our way. And so we'll get that information. Care, would you share that with the council? Uh, when you have that information provided and add that to the discourse? Uh, are there, Robert, did you have anything you wanted to add? Because this is your proposal on item three.
No, uh, I'd, I'd like to hear what Gus's findings will be. And perhaps maybe by this next council meeting, we should be able to have something a ruling about whether or not the, even the canals. If, if we're talking about trying to make a positive impact, you know, with the community. If, if the, if the city comes up and says, yes, you're right, they're within our, our jurisdiction. They're within our, our bounds. You know, they're within our city limits. And they would be responsible. So, you know, and, and if there's some sort of positive action, because without it, then it's, it's a mute point. And, and Councilman Yancy, I, 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 I can't remove something that most of our people are, are afraid of the city on and they want protections.
Yeah, I, I agree with your protection. I just don't like the word. And I, and, and just like you, because I do live in C. I have friends that live in Omega Bay. And everybody does, is not for that word. So that's why I'm saying that, that's my non-negotiable, but I'm one person. Um, I think that's too strong of a word and it just breeds discontent. Especially when this council has done everything that we can so far in our power. And uh, we are coming together on good ground, right? And I just think, I think that, that invokes a negativity. That word.
Okay, Gus, so I heard you say that the TERS board is a revenue stream for debt for them to repair the streets?
The, the TERS board was created as a means to ensure that if the city or if the streets were dedicated to the city, there would actually be funds appropriated. or if the streets were dedicated to the city, there would actually be funds appropriated for the repair, maintenance, replacement, but for the streets.
And.
And to date, there's not been any work done.
So my question then would be, if the city takes over the streets, the TERS board stays active in collecting TERS money? We are just a vessel to get backing for Omega Bay to get the streets repaired?
Um, the, the TERS funds as they are today cannot be used for private streets. So, so the, the city council, I would, I would never say y'all are just a vessel for, for something. No, I, I get it, um, um, the TERS is there to have a, I mean, we're about to come into budget workshops.
Right.
The TERS is there as a funding mechanism that's set, it is part of the city budget, all other city funds, but it's set aside for that.
Specifically for.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Very good, any other discussion on item three? Uh, let's move Mr. Mishchich to item four.
Now, item four is, uh, I, you might consider that part of, uh, a timeline, so to speak. If, if we can agree, if we do reach some sort of agreement on a reversion contract, it would have to be created first and, and agreed to by the attorney, sign everything there. And then we could take it to our residents and say, we have this guarantee, we've, we've created, we actually have a contract in hand, you know, these are the terms of the contract. And then we support transferring of these roads.
Okay.
Because if we just transferred roads without it, this association will find itself mired in lawsuits by some homeowners, because there are going to be some that'll say, no, no matter what. And so, you know, my stance is, is that we have to achieve fifty percent plus one to do it.
Sure.
It's gotta be a, a, a simple majority at the moment.
So, so let me ask you this, Mr. Mishchich, those, those, the, the sentiment of those residents that would say no, absolutely not, wi- without some sort of an agreement, what is the solution to Omega Bay's problem in their understanding? If, if, if they say no to the city, uh, uh, acquiring the streets and then maintaining them, how then would that move you out of the condition that you're in now as a community?
Those same residents and plus some others may want to utilize that word that Councilman Yancy doesn't like. And, uh, either that, or we stay status quo. We keep paying tax money, we keep building the TERS. And maybe at some point that, that gets enough to where they realize that, yeah, we can transfer it and spend that money. You know, right now, the, the money that's in the TERS won't do much.
So if you, if you use the word that Ms. Yancy doesn't want to use, how then would that, how, how, what is the end goal? How would you then get your streets repaired, reconstructed and maintained? If, if you use that word and that, you were successful?
Once the city taxes have paid off the share of debt that the subdivision would owe under that circumstance, those city taxes go away. We would then create an additional assessment on ourselves in order to self-fund those roads and the mouths.
And so the debt that you are speaking about, uh, is debt that, that, that is currently incurred by the city right now? So you want to be released from all debt, even debt that's being incurred right now?
Only if a reversion contract fails.
Right.
Off the city park.
So, 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 so debt that is, that has been incurred on a new fire truck?
Correct, well.
Like, like, like we just recently acquired fire trucks and, and, and we are actually in the process of.
We're paying that off.
Right, so if, if, if you were to D N X, then any and all debt, even debt that was incurred while you were legal residents of the city of Lamarck, you want that debt to be removed from the Omega Bay residents?
If under a reversion contract. Let's, let's give an example, if Omega Bay said, we don't want any part of this, let's proceed with disannexation. And we go down that route, and let's say it was successful. At that point in time, a court is going to say, you know, and it's based on so, on state law, boom, you'll, you'll be disannexed, but we would still be paying city taxes until that current share of that debt is satisfied, in that three years, somewhere around that timeframe of the current debt that it would take to pay it off. Okay, let's say under a version contract, we float around, maybe we've got a, a, a four or five year time window, maybe we've got a three year time window to get everything done. But let's say we spend all this time under a version contract and it doesn't get done, and then it reverts back, where's Omega Bay then? But farther behind, with not getting anything done, and still owing that debt? And if they chose to, to pursue that word, uh, then, then, uh, you know, it'd take another three years or more, depending on what that debt is, at that time to pay it off. So it, it's a lose-lose under that circumstances without that for the community.
And so, so if the, if the, if the people, uh, i- i- if, if the remaining people of Lamarck, because we're all people of Lamarck at this point, if those people choose, uh, not to agree to remove the debt, then for the foreseeable future, the residents of Omega Bay would have to, uh, endure subpar streets, because you would not have the financial leverage to be able to do, uh, anything, uh, major with the repair and the reconstruction of your streets without the city removing that debt.
We do it just like we're doing today.
Yeah.
We, we, we patch and repair and replace segments, and we do it all under our H O A dues.
Would you?
Gus, if, am I accurate in saying the following? That when the ordinance creating the TERS was passed in twenty nineteen, the consistent with the document, there is a tax increment base as of the value of taxi entities, units located in the zone. Um, as of, um, January first, twenty nineteen, when, when it refers to the base, that base of, of value is money that is coming to the city. Is that correct to say that?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be correct.
And then the tax increment fund are those improvements or those additions in the appraised value of property within the zone that is then collected, we, we have our base.
Correct.
And I would like to know what that base is, uh, our finance person is here, but, but, oh, okay. Um, what, what is that base? And, um, and then the, um, uh, what is a number listing the subsequent increases per year that has been collected in the value? That's number one. Second is, um, and, 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 and I make that statement because this, a bit goes to your point, Robert. That money has already been used, being used by the residents for, by the residents of Omega Bay, uh, for the benefit of the entire city, consistent with this particular agreement creating the TERS board. So, you know, we're utilizing that as part of our general fund to purchase uh, fires, uh, fire trucks and
Correct.
the new emergency, uh, uh, what is it, the cabins that we got, uh, that the chief just was showing off. Uh, so.
Oh, the ambulance.
The ambulance, and so, so that's one area. And, um, the issue is the increased value, so that's, that's one thing. The, um, and I think the other thing that we need to look at in terms of this process and this procedure, Gus, is in fact state statute, uh, setting forth the procedures and, um, what, what if any guidance is being offered? Uh, there are other examples of this, is what I'm saying already. We've had examples of areas that have been disannexed. And I'd like to see what, how that this issue was addressed in, in, in that, in those particular situations to provide us more guidance, uh, that's how my brain is working on this side.
Yeah, thank, thank you, thank you, Mayor Perkin. Any other comments on item four?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I can, we do have a balance that was requested with the balance of the account is, uh, the exact amount is three hundred and seventeen thousand, two sixty and eight cents. Plus, there will be another one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight and seventy cents that will be deposited tomorrow in the investment account.
Right.
Just for, just for the record, one, and if I can make one more small point to answer the question I was asked, um, please understand if annexation were to, to, de-annexation, the word we don't want to use were to occur, the question was asked about the funding and so forth, just for the record, for everybody who stands, one thing we failed to mention that also included in that is the service for police, fire, EMS. So, and, and essentially what you need to do is, although you pay for sanitation separately, those are the four essential services that you have now, you would re-have to reinstitute the, the cost of whatever the power is, which is roughly two thousand bucks a month for, 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 for your, uh, streetlights. Um, give it to, is it, excuse me, a couple hundred bucks a month, I'm sorry. But also, you would need to find somebody to provide those other services, be it police, whether it's the county, you contract with us, whatever the case is, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, but let me say, so, so three, uh, I see you raring up, Mr. Mishchich, let me, let me try to, let, let me bring this point and I'll, I'll, I'll give it back to you. Three hundred plus some odd thousand dollars over how, how many years? Is that three years, you, the, the balance you gave?
I believe it's over four.
It's three to four years, yes.
Ma'am?
It is three to four years.
Three to four years, a- and, and here's my point, uh, going back to this idea of mistrust. When we look at factual information, we look at the past three to four years, and I hope that we would communicate this to our residents in Omega Bay, many of them are frustrated. But the facts of the matter is, in the last three or four years, we have a earmark three hundred some odd plus thousand dollars back into Omega Bay. We're not expending that on, on Barondo Pines, we're not expending that on Delaney Cove, we're not expending that in what some would consider Old Lamarck, District D or District A or, or Bayou Road or anything. We're giving those tax dollars back to Omega Bay. We are, we have provided increased levels of public safety, right? We have provided for, uh, increased safety measures by providing for these streetlights. Those are just three things that I'm hearing us float around here in this meeting. So as we go back, I would hope as we go back to Omega Bay, we go back and realize perhaps, uh, for decades, there have been stress and distress. But here in the recent past, there have been councils who have respected you, who have honored you, uh, and who are willing to work with you to provide the absolute best and most services that we can provide, uh, for you. Uh, so again, I want to continue to drill down on that, the way we build trust is we look at factual information. Uh, and, and, and not necessarily things that have transpired, uh, in the past, and I hope that we can do that. Mr. Mishchich, you wanted to add something to Mr. Garcia's?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, on the TERS, when that TERS was initially established, and, and one of the most recent things that they looked at as that TERS bills is a TERS bond that is not a voter-approved bond, but it's an actual TERS bond, it's different from a C O bond. But when there's enough revenue coming in annually, that could cover everything and do that. Um, when the TERS was established, there was no discussion that it could not be spent until roads became public roads and in possession of the city. That has been a new, since, since you've been here, that's, that's been your research and, and your, your discovery. Uh, that we'd like to look somewhere else.
We confuse.
Hmm?
We confuse it.
Yeah.
So.
No, you can't, you, you, it's right now, the, the, right now, the outlook is that it can't be used until, unless the roads became Lamarck's.
That's a, you're saying that's a, that's a new opinion from, from our city attorneys, what you're saying, Mr. Mishchich?
From, from when it was originally established. And so that creates a little bit of distrust. But I'm not saying it's something that we can't get past. But, um, that is a funding method oper- you know, option for you. And, uh,
So, so here's, let, let me say this before Doug jumps in, Gus, um, certainly would you research that? Uh, to make sure, because, because I think that's a fair point. I believe, I believe the previous council to this one created, uh, the TERS so that we could provide for a way for our residents in Omega Bay to maintain their streets. That was the original intention. If somehow, if somehow the, the opinion has changed, uh, I'd like to see the, the old opinion, I'd like to see personally the, whatever new opinion you've issued. Uh, let's be mindful, tho- those of us that are listening and that are present, uh, the opinion of a turn, of an attorney does not necessarily coincide with the will of a council, right? It's, it's his job to, to, uh, look at the law and to, uh, to provide for an opinion. That doesn't mean that we agree with that opinion. Uh, that doesn't mean that, that we believe, uh, that, that what, uh, what his legal opinion is is the right thing to do for our, our community, let's make sure we, we're saying that. Secondly, Gus, I have a question for you as it relates to this TERS. Is there any way possibly for us to, uh, uh, provide for more, uh, tax dollars, lower the threshold? Uh, so that, uh, if, if, so that instead of it being capped at, 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 at this dollar figure tax revenue, we perhaps would be able to lower it so that we might be able to at some point increase the acceleration of monies in that, uh, in that, uh, uh, TERS line item to reach, uh, what, and I don't know, uh, Mr. Mishchich, if, if what you're saying is, is accurate. If he says is accurate as far as triggering a TERS bond, right? Is there any way for us to lower that threshold, perhaps to accelerate those dollars? If there is an opportunity to legally, uh, move toward a TERS bond?
I would have to look at that.
Would you look at that for me, please?
They, but to, to follow, to answer a somewhat related question to that, the city is already contributing the maximum percentage. Um, it's com- it's contributing a hundred percent of the increment on the increased value.
Is there any way to, to lower that threshold so that?
Oh, no, uh, I, I will look at that.
Look, which place, which place, Doug?
Uh, y'all answered most of this, but it's, so basically my, I think we need more clarification on the TERS.
Okay.
As far as expenditure, because my understanding of a TERS is kind of like a, a mud district. You, you utilize that money to build up the roads, and then after that's complete, roads, if you use a TERS for anything that's going to build up your tax base, make your property more valuable, and then once that's done, you can turn it back over to the city after that's complete. Not wait till it builds up, give the roads to you.
Say that last part to me again, Doug.
So basically, my understanding of a TERS is that we should be able to utilize the money. That's what it turns, it's developed for. And then, once the roads are complete, they should be turned over to the city then.
Okay.
Versus wait, give you the roads now and then.
Okay, I got you, that makes sense, that makes sense, that actually does make sense, it makes sense to me. It does, it really does.
I mean, that's what you do.
That's the, that's the, that, but, you're, you're exactly right, that makes sense, that makes sense. So then we would, so, so the key then would be, as we think about this, would be to, to leverage those dollars so that we could provide for a major, uh, road reconstruction and improvement along the lines of what you, I think you were trying to suggest, Mr. Mishchich.
Yes.
Are you following us, Gus?
I am.
Okay, is there any way you could? Okay. Is there any way you can give us an opinion on that?
Yes.
As well. Okay.
Of course.
That that's real good. That's real good. I like that. Any other discussion on item four? Any questions about item four? So let's let's recap to see if we can, we can, we can uh, have some some homework to move forward. Um, we had, we need several questions answered. Can we, can we recap? Were you taking good notes, Ms. Ms. Nance?
I I think I was, but I'm sure you guys are gonna have something that I missed.
Well, we'll add and delete as 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 needed.
Okay, so we started off with questioning uh, the ownership of the canals.
Number one.
Um, and who's responsible for the dredging of the canals?
Number two.
Um, Mayor Potem asked the question of what would the total obligation of the city be related to the ownership of the streets?
Three.
Um, a request of the city manager to reconvene the G L O meeting that was held previously by certain members in the room. I'm not exactly sure who all was included. Um, we were asked to review the dredging practices of Tiki Island and Bayou Vista. Um, Mayor Potem asked uh, for a consideration of the materials that would be needed for reconstruction, concrete versus asphalt streets, and how many for each? Um, Gus is supposed to request at times to review the legality of the proposal that was presented today. Um, Mayor, uh, sorry, Councilman Ross asked if funding for the streets uh, could be obtained prior to the street dedications. Um, Mayor Potem asked us to review the de-annexation process. Uh, we are, um, based off of uh, Board Member Horstica's uh, request to research the Omega Bay Street Dedication Vote that happened previously under Mayor Larry Crow. Um, asked if we could lower the tax base for the TERS board. Um, and then finding out if the TERS funding could be used on streets prior to the street dedication, the opinion of the uh, last previous city attorney, uh, compared to the pre uh, the opinion of the current city attorney. Um, and then a clarification of what the TERS funding is for.
Also, it it with that last, uh, that that last uh, bullet point, uh, researched the idea of leveraging those TERS fu- funds for a for a bond.
Yes, sir. I believe that is being done in conjunction with the new financing plan for the that the TERS board is commissioning.
Okay.
But yes.
Okay. So, all of these questions need to be answered for the council's edification, for the TERS board's edification. And I actually do want uh, copies to be distributed to the homeowners association board. Uh, how long, Gus? You have a lot of homework, Gus. It's a good thing you were a good student. How long will it take for you and for Ms. Nance uh, to gather these documents? Because you have to research the the vote. Uh, how long will it take for you all to gather, gather these documents uh, and pull them together into one cohesive response?
Um, does, I mean, I'm inclined to say thirty days, but is, yeah, um, does the uh, y'all's meeting on for July is the eighth? Your first council meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, so either the first or second meeting of July.
Okay. Uh, I would say first, if if we can, we don't want to delay.
Yeah, and and if I can't finish, I will give you
Absolutely. I think everybody in this room can understand that if they
Say I didn't finish, nothing. I will give you what I
Right, right. That's right. So so then, once we receive that information, I would like, Gus, for you also to help us to understand the uh, the ramifications uh, of a uh, reversion contract. Uh, what that means for us as a city, uh, the benefits, the uh, the disadvantages, perhaps, so that we as a council can understand that. And I would like you to provide that as well to the TERS and the HOA. Uh, and from that, then the council, because now it's 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 a council issue. From that, the council can choose to uh, engage in uh, and an agreement, or we can choose to uh, do something other than or outside of an agreement. Is that fair enough?
Yes, sir.
You want to add? Go ahead.
I'll get you a uh, uh, a proposal from Lucas Construction on what the roads would be, that would be helpful.
Yes, sir.
It it wouldn't be an actual official bid, but they're they're gonna be real close.
Would the work be detailed in it as well?
Um, we just talked about the perimeter being six, six inches of, and with the turn-in aprons being cement. And uh, the interiors reground it and uh, uh, blacktop.
Okay. So whatever, whatever you, whatever you're asking Lucas to provide, perhaps Mr. Garcia needs so that
I will forward it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mishchitch.
Absolutely.
Very good. Doug? Would that be okay? All right. So we move forward, we gather information and we move forward, uh, prayerfully on the eighth. Um, with uh, uh, I I don't believe that we'll be able to get get to a vote on the eighth because we'll all be uh, discussing this information. I invite uh, the representatives of the TERS board and the HOA to come back to our meeting on July the eighth so that we can have a discussion in council, you know, we can, it can't be this long, obviously. Uh, but but so that we can have a discussion in council uh, to discuss the results of our research, uh, as well as uh, your comments on the research that we would provide to you so that we can, the council can build some sort of consensus on how we choose to proceed. Is that fair, Mr. Mishchitch?
Mayor and council, I'd like to thank each of you, Mr. Garcia and Gus, everyone um, for your time uh, to hear us all.
Yes, sir.
I think it's been positive, at least it's a start, it's a, and it's a two-way conversation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance.
Same goes to us.
Absolutely. Again, ladies and gentlemen of Omega Bay, I for one uh, believe that you are valuable members of our community. Uh, we we definitely have uh, been in uh, disconnect at times in the past. Uh, there is obviously uh, frustration, uh, because we all want what's best for our community. Uh, and we want uh, the residents of Omega Bay to drive down safe streets. Uh, perhaps not as much as those that drive down those streets. We we won't be, we won't, we won't uh, uh, be uh, that uh, over the top with with our comments. But we will say we do understand as best we can, because we don't drive those streets every day. But this council will not shrink back from making hard decisions. And this council won't shrink back from doing the people's business. And again, you all are valuable members. Thank you all for visiting with us. Thank you for continuing to work with us uh, as we continue to build this city. Uh, we want you to be a part of it, and we're gonna do everything in our power to make sure that you feel a part of it. Any further discussions?
Feel a part of it because it is an all-American city.
That's true. That's true. Any further discussions? Again, we have to clear the room because I believe there's another meeting. Uh, it looks like there's some angry folks in the back that are I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is that second?
Second.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second? All in favor on council and on our TERS board, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand dismissed.